Madam Clerk, would you please bring us out of closed session?
We're only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yes.
Mayor Shornak?
Yes.
Counselor Lemon Bailey?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselors Agolos?
Yes.
All right, do I have, we're going to go ahead and open the regular meeting. And do I have a motion to amend or either adopt the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move that we remove R-4 as an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, is there any other? Okay, I have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda by removing R-4, Appointment of City Attorney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yes.
Mayor Shornak?
Yes.
Counselor Lemon Bailey?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselors Agolos?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh.
Thank you. Did we already have a call to order? I mean, the roll call for the regular, okay, would you go ahead and roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Gore. You know Vice Mayor Gore had that work thing, she won't be in at all. Okay. Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pellum?
Here.
Mayor Shornak?
Here.
Counselor Lemon Bailey?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Counselors Agolos?
Here.
Well, we thank everybody for coming out tonight. This looks like a great way to start the meeting, and we hope that you come and get some good education on how we operate up here. We do appreciate your attendance tonight, and please feel free to come back again. We're going to go ahead and start off our meeting by prayer with Reverend Jeff Butler of John Randolph Pastoral Care, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And Vice Mayor Gore is not here, so we will go ahead with Counselor Pellum. Okay? Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, our city has been moving into its second 100 years, and we honor you for your providential care that sustains each of us here and each Hopewell household and business. I thank you for each city council representative and their continued desire to represent you by bringing their giftedness, ward by ward and collectively, into a unique and creative service that continues strengthening and revitalizing our community. As we pray for this particular evening, it's hard to forget nationally all the challenges present in Washington. May the reminder of the divisiveness and rancor that we see there help us all the more to maintain the bond of peace, the peace that you've gifted our community with, and that with your help, we have the ability to continue advancing here. And thank you for your faithfulness through us, and I pray in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go ahead with the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda in the form listed?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, Counselor Denton?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pellum?
Yes.
Mayor Shornak?
Yes.
Counselor Lemon Bailey?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselors Agolos?
Yes.
Aaron, would you like to come up and do the recognition to the John Randolph Medical Center, Vulcan Materials Corporation, and Dominion Fireworks?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. I am honored to be before you tonight to recognize three of our strongest community partners, three community partners that assist our department and make a little event that we call fireworks on the Appomattox possible. For those that haven't had a chance to participate in the event or see the event, it is our fireworks display on Appomattox River that has become an annual event now. It's one of the most spectacular sights you'll see on our river or anywhere in the region. We could not do it without these three partners at the table, and we would like to recognize them tonight with a small token of our appreciation. Those organizations are the John Randolph Medical Center, Vulcan Materials Corporation, and Dominion Fireworks. And at this time, I'd like to ask representatives from those three organizations to come up front, and we'll give a brief little presentation.
That was yours.
Aaron.
Thank you, and I too want to express my gratitude. For a long time, there was many years that we didn't have fireworks, and I think the resurrection of this fireworks has really created quite a buzz, and it's grown bigger and bigger every year, and we really do appreciate your support for that as well. Thank you. All right, Aaron?
I have another announcement to make on a separate project, but also one that highlights our riverfront here in Hopewell. We're very excited to announce the official groundbreaking of our Hopewell Riverwalk project happening this Friday, September 28, 2:00 at City Park. This will mark the official beginning of this project, although it's been in the works for roughly two years now, getting funding, making sure permitting's in place, making sure easements are in place, and actually John Randolph, who was just recognized, played a major role in that as well. For those that don't know, the Riverwalk will be a 1,700 linear foot timber walkway that follows the shoreline of the Appomattox River and originates at City Park and will end somewhere just shy of the Boathouse Restaurant. We do have plans of a Phase Two for that project to connect all the way to the marina, and we hope to be very close to that Phase Two project, getting that started as well. But we will break ground on that project, and of course, we hope to see you all there. The ceremony is open to the general public, and again, that's City Park this Friday, September 28, at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you, and that is exciting news for our Riverwalk, too. That's going to be a great addition to our city. Unfortunately, I won't be there, Aaron, and I'm going to be out of town, so sorry to have missed it. Christina?
I just wanted to give, I'm sorry, I missed giving one of these to Aaron. There's a, this is a, this is the James River, this is the James River watershed, and as some others remarked, this is an educational thing for children, and one of them looks like, kind of like the Riverwalk, so if you want to, maybe we can pass those out on Friday.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, just before we start into our public hearings, I do, I forgot about this when we were praying. Let's all remember the many families that were affected by the hurricanes in North Carolina as well as South Carolina. I have many relatives in the South Carolina area, and thank goodness, nothing happened, but some were very close. So let's keep all of them and their families in our prayers. Okay, we are going ahead with public hearings, number one.
First public hearing this evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a rezoning request submitted for Appomattox Street Lots 1 and 2, Copeland subdivision, and lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 16, B Village. This property, most people know as the former site of the Patrick Copeland Elementary School. We have a proposal submitted by Bowman Development operating as Francisco Landing. It's requested the rezoning of the property. Ms. Griffin is here to present the staff report to council, and then we have the applicants here that will speak after Ms. Griffin is finished.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. As Mr. Altman has said, I'm here to present the staff report that you've received in your packet regarding the request from Francisco Landing Holdings LLC to rezone property located in Ward 1. The request is to rezone property from B1 to a planned unit development within our B1 district. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 12, 2018. At that time, they postponed a vote, but they came back August 2 of 2018 and recommended approval of the application with the proffer condition. The approval was a recommendation vote of four to zero. The property is identified as sub parcel 299-0010, 299-005, and 011-0806. The total square, the total acreage is 6.63 acres. Within a planned unit development, the zoning ordinance requires at least half of the property to remain open space. They are meeting that requirement, and half of that property open space would be 3.31 acres. The property is located off of Appomattox Street, and your most recent comprehensive plan that you voted on and approved in April requires the section to be downtown commercial mixed use. That area requires for a mix of uses. It also allows for residential mixed use, and it's also in our urban development area. This development would be phased, the first phase would be buildings G1 and G2, the plaza, the promenade, and the stormwater management features. G1 and G2 would have 75 units and also have a restaurant. The total cost of that section would be $15.5 million. There's a lot to the staff reports, I'm only doing certain sections, but it's 10 pages, so I've highlighted some sections that I think the audience should know about. In any PUD, what's required is a concept plan or a master plan to be provided to the Planning Commission and to city council, and the developer has to answer certain questions. The first question is if the development is compatible with the comprehensive plan. We have found that the development is compatible with the comprehensive plan 2028. The setbacks in conceptual planning layout has been provided to you. It can be found on Exhibit D in your packet. The land use plan also can be found in your packet, and that is Exhibit D. The density requires or allows up to 50 units per acre, and that would be a maximum of 300 units. The applicant is just proposing 175 units, and so this means that they are meeting the density requirements. Open space, as said before, they are going to meet the open space by having 3.3 acres as open space. The height and screening of the buildings, this is just in regards to G1 and G2, the DDRRC, as you know, has been charged with looking at the architecture of the buildings, and the DDRRC at their July 12 meeting did approve, excuse me, July 11 meeting, did approve the architecture for buildings G1 and G2. As the project moves along, and if approved, they would then continue to approve other aspects of the project, including all of the buildings, the promenade, and the plaza that would have to go before the DDRRC. Let me see. One of the things that can be required as a part of the planning and development is a traffic impact analysis. The Planning Commission voting did not see a need at that time for a traffic impact analysis, but you do have in your packet a shared parking analysis that was done by Desmond, and that shared parking analysis showed that there would be sufficient parking for building E, F, excuse me, building E, G1 and G2, building I and building J. At the time that building F would come online, it did show that there would be a deficit of parking, at which time the developers had said that they would provide a proffer condition. That proffer condition is in your packet, and what that says is that before building F would be built, they would have to come back to the Planning Commission and provide a plan for sufficient parking. That can be in several different components, and one of that is estimated or proposed to be a parking deck. Again, the Planning Commission recommends approval. They did that at their August 2 meeting. You do have the chairman of the Planning Commission here to answer any questions. I believe I also saw another Planning Commission member come in, Mrs. Vanderkite, and you also have Chip and Ed Bowman here who can answer any questions, the other developers for this project.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we have Debbie Randolph.
I got here early, so I was first on the list. Debbie Randolph, Ward 1. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to speak tonight as a member of the Economic Development Authority Board, because we've been part of this for a while now, have been brought in and allowed to hear the presentations and to talk to the Bowman brothers and to see the plans. I want to state that I live in Ward 1, and I live in City Point where this will be close by, and I am in favor of this particular development. I like that it is going to be done in phased portions, and I found that throughout the process, and for most of the EDA members that I spoke with. We had questions, we had concerns, and both Chip and Ed Bowman were very responsive to any of the requests that we had, and I think for the rezoning and for, in lieu of stepping up and speaking in the next public hearing, also for the sale of this property to them for this development. I will say that one of the things that I'm still looking forward to is that traffic study that Ms. Griffin just talked about. I think traffic and parking will be critical on this project, and I feel that traffic from someone that goes by the beacon every day on Appomattox Street where this project will be, both going to work and coming home, we are concerned in the point about how that will impact our leaving and coming home every day, so we are anxious to also look at that. But I know that it is something that the developers are willing to work with us on, so I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Walton, Ward 5. It's been a while.
Welcome back.
As you know, I'm pretty much an advocate for the river over a bunch, a lot of years here, so yeah, I'm interested in this, that, you know, may complement the riverfront and riverfront development. Went to one of the meetings with, that they had with, down at Guncott, and then come away with some questions, I guess, when I was on council, you know, first question would be, you know, what's it going to cost us? You know, another question, is it going to be, you know, market rate, or is it going to be affordable housing? So those are things, they answered to my, you know, if it's right, that's going to be market rating. You look around at, you know, I've often wondered, you know, two miles across the river, they can get $1,500 for an apartment, and you come into Hopewell, $800. You wonder why we can't get people to come into town, and nice apartments like this may bring them. Did a study when I was on council about the income from downtown, the tax base. We have none. You know, Dollar General and Hardee's were the two biggest things when I was there, there's some other things that happen now, but I think that would complement with starting off at 15 million, they talk about up to 40 million investment here. It's got to be something that we should be interested in. We talk about rental property, a lot of people say, well, we've got too much rental property. I think today's youth are probably more transient than they used to be, there are more of them are, you know, living for today and not tomorrow, so rental property in this nature, if you go up toward Rockets Landing and things like that, it's just out of space. So hopefully, we can attract somebody like that. Talked a little bit about parking a minute ago, you know, I know we own property all around the downtown, and I think there's some opportunities with the ones on the other side of the apartments, the old Brawheal, even the Hopewell street there in front of the social service. We saved that for space for a while, but there's opportunities there to do some, the parking part of it. You know, I've been working for years on the riverfront trails and things like that. The Riverwalk's going to be put up this, this coming Friday, so wow, that's a long time. If I had to picture, I gave it on the public website, when we started 15 years ago, myself and even Ms. Kathy back here who helped me out there, she fussed at me a lot, but we did get some, we did get some work done, and it's amazing the difference 15 years has made there. So, and keeping the public space below the apartment level, I think is important. They talk about the view shed being better, they talk about putting the amphitheater back, all these things we've asked for. Counselor Bailey, I know, is one of a lot of those things that were here in the '30s and things like that. So I think that it really complements the businesses downtown. We've got to help them, you know, foot traffic, people on, feet on the ground, people want to spend money, and like I say, the traffic control might be something, but I know we can come around and fix that up. So I think I'm in support of that, and I hope that you can pass it, and it's a start, you know, along the river, and I think it really is important to connect that river to our downtown to bring some dollars in here, so thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Podlowski?
Good evening, council, Catherine Podlowski, Ward 1. I'd spoken previously about this PUD rezoning, and I do like the fact that with some rezoning, they are required more green space, but I am against the development on this site. Thank you.
Okay, that is all I have on the list for public hearing number one. If, and there's anyone else that would like to talk about this particular subject on public hearing number one, let me know. If not, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask if there's going to be a motion?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if that gentleman wanted to speak.
I think he, does he understand that this is for a development at the Patrick Copeland sites? Sir, do you, were you going to speak about this public hearing for the development of the Patrick Copeland site?
We were going to try to give back about 20 minutes earlier, but we're unaware of the site and she was excited to speak.
Right, well, if you want to speak, you know, I can, I guess officially open back up for...
I had, yes, I don't think you've closed it because I was trying to get, I saw him stand.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't think he did.
No, absolutely not. Just come up to the mic, and you have three minutes, and just state your name.
Five minutes.
My name is Michael Arnt.
Pull the mic to you.
Sorry, is that better?
Yes, very good.
Okay. My name is Michael Arnt. I live on 520 Appomattox Street. I have no particular objection to this development. It sounds like a nice idea to have more units here, more available housing. I am a little concerned about the parking spaces, just as some of the other members mentioned. The calculations they show say we're going to have 129 units and 139 spaces. I'm not sure if anybody else here has ever lived in a one-bedroom apartment at this price at $1,000. I think a lot of those are going to be two people living in an apartment, both of whom will have cars. If you assume that to be the norm, then you're going to have 258 parking spaces needed. Out of 139 available, that's going to be a deficit of 119 spaces if we assume two people, two cars per apartment. And that deficit of 119 spaces missing from the plan, that's best case. That's no excess, that's the businesses in this organization have no parking used ever at any time. That's the beacon never draws any parking or uses any parking from here on out. If we assume that in fact you split that, say that of those 129 units, half of them have two people, two cars, and half of them have what my wife and I did until very recently when we were living in this sort of housing, which is, if you don't have a car, you don't get to work. If you don't get to work, you don't get paid, and you lose your job, and then you lose your house very shortly after that. So our strategy was, the two of us had three cars. It was a necessity, because when one car broke down, either you lose your job and your house, or you find a way to make it work. So it was not uncommon to have a car up on blocks getting repaired. We've done all kinds of repair work to them. And if we go with the idea that half the units will be two-car units and half will be three-car units, that brings up a total of 323 car spaces needed. Out of the 139 they're providing, that'd be a deficit of 184 spaces. Again, including the idea that none of the businesses in this area ever draw parking for any reason, and the beacon never draws parking. I think this could be a good idea, but they really need to provide more parking, maybe have a lower deck, be parking spaces or a parking deck or something. I'd really recommend you look at that. Thank you for breaking the rules.
Thank you. No problem, thank you. Okay, going to go ahead and close the public hearing? I think we need a motion on the floor, then we'll have discussion. Okay, Counselor Denton?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to rezone Appomattox Street Lots 1 and 2, Copeland subdivisions, and Lots 1, 2, and 3, Public Block 16, B Village subdivision.
And I'll second the motion for discussion.
Counselor Pellum?
Yes. Is it appropriate for the...
Yes, if you want to ask...
To answer that question for the resident that just spoke about the parking, can we do that, or Mr. Dane?
I think it's more appropriate for staff to...
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, somebody.
I appreciate Ms. Ernst's concerns. That was the first concern that we had, and pretty much everybody looked at this project initially had, was was there enough parking? We didn't just make assumptions. We asked the developer and downtown partnership and the city, we combined and shared the cost of a traffic analysis, parking analysis by a national company, the Desmond Group out of Boston, Massachusetts. They used national figures, they didn't, they didn't come and get influenced by our numbers. They came in, did a study, and they determined what nationally these type units generate parking-wise. And Ms. Griffin alluded to it in her presentation that there's with certainty enough parking all the way until they get to the F building. When they get to the F building, then it does become a shortfall of parking. But before they can build the F building, they have to solve that additional parking issue in agreement with us and move on from there. Then they can develop the F building and consider future options on other development. But they can't do that until they fix that parking problem at that issue, at that point. So it has been addressed, there is adequate parking for the phasing. We're writing into the development agreement, which you will see at the next meeting for approval, we're writing into that those terms to make sure all that is clear and concise, and there's no question about it. But I appreciate his concerns, but we have very thoroughly looked at the issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dane. Anyone else have any questions? If not, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
So like me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Lemon Bailey?
Yeah, I just, I do want to reiterate that I appreciate Mr. Ernst's concerns, and I understand that there was a study done. However, I can see his point in regard to, there's a difference between certain cities that have more public transportation for, especially getting to work versus areas. We do thankfully have some public transportation in Hopewell, but it's limited, so I do want to recognize his concerns and note that typically for getting to work, we do have the need for a car. I do want to point out, though, also that the rezoning versus, this is just the rezoning, so it's not a final decision on the rest of the project, and I, and I know the Bowman brother, thank you for all your hard work on this. And I, and I know the Bowman, thank you for all your hard work on this. I think we still have some things to work out, but I want to reassure the public that the rezoning does not mean that we're approving the whole project. The rezoning is more about guaranteeing that there will be green space preserved, as opposed to simply B1, which is business the whole way. So just want to make that distinction. Thank you.
Okay. If no further questions, we're Councilors of Golis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we had a couple, we had a work session recently, and I think you remember that I did say something about sparking, parking rather, and the parking spaces. And we do have a couple of parking, public parking lots that we're going to put signage up in the area. And there are other areas, too, that we're looking at for parking, and we realize that that's going to be a demand, especially in the future. And we do have a project that's going up in Hopewell right now that has underground parking underneath the facility. So parking is going to be an issue, though, eventually, because I see where they have 271 spaces, 100 of them on the city-owned parking lot on the corner of Appomattox Street and Hopewell Street, and 118 will be included with the planned unit development. And there's 33 spaces along Appomattox Street, so that's where they got the 271 total. But there are other areas that we can park in Hopewell, that businesses can park in. We do have a parking, public parking lot beside Sausy's Restaurant over there. We have a public parking lot that's, in the courthouse area, behind the Hardee's and areas like that. And the city's well aware that we're going to need more parking spots, and we can eventually, hopefully in the future, have parking deck, maybe, you know, four or five-story parking deck somewhere in the, in an appropriate area. So that is an issue that we're going to look at, but I don't see any reason, really, to delay, you know, this project, and I'm in, I'm totally supportive of it. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Seconded, roll call, please.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Shornak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councilors of Golis?
Yes.
Motion passes six of.
Okay. Public hearing number two.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the second public hearing you have this evening is essentially the same parcel of land, but in accordance with its Code of Virginia, we have to conduct a public hearing in order to sell public property, and that's what this public hearing is for. Mr. Dane is here to give you an overview of the request.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, thank you. As the city manager said, this is a follow-on to the PUD approval just made. I do want to note here that we are not asking for a decision on this public hearing tonight, because we are trying to finalize a development agreement, which we would seek your approval on at the next meeting, and that's when we would seek approval for moving forward. However, the public hearing has been properly advertised. You should hear the comments of citizens and move from there. About 15 months ago, well, let me start him before that. Over the course of the last 10 years, we've had multiple proposals to develop the Patrick Copeland site. Some have been borderline considerable, some have been laughable, and all have been asking for the city to invest quite a bit in the project. But we never gave up. We kept, we kept looking at opportunities. We turned several away, but we kept looking at opportunities. About 15 months ago, I was introduced to two gentlemen at a function up in Richmond, and just struck up conversation with them and talked for quite a bit that evening about their construction business and what they did and what they developed and so forth, and invited them down to come look at the property. And at that point, I didn't realize something that was very interesting that I later learned. But they came down, looked at the site, and started considering what the possibilities were. From the onset, we told them, we're not giving away land. We want a development that will help spur growth downtown. We need rooftops to support the businesses. And a downtown revitalization is always a chicken, a chicken or the egg thing. You need restaurants, you need things for people to do to encourage people to build rooftops, apartments. But you also need apartments to encourage people to open restaurants and all. So it's been a difficult thing to crack, and that's what every locality faces, especially smaller localities like us. But the, but the pieces have been falling to get in place and starting to come together here over the course of the last couple of years, and we think we finally have, have been able to merge those two issues together. And they were excited by the prospects, and we started talking about it at length. But when we stood out there in the field, they told me a story that I think is very significant. If you notice, the name of this project is Francisco Landing. If you don't know it, not all of y'all know, I know, but for the audience, we have a statue or a bust out in front of City Hall of Peter Francisco. Peter Francisco was said by George Washington to, that he would not have won the Revolutionary War were it not for Peter Francisco. He was a strapping man. He was, I think, 6'5" or 6'6", a very large man, and that was a very big man back in revolutionary times. He became, he was an orphan. He was dropped off at the docks of City Point at five years of age. He was taken in by some people and raised and became a very successful citizen of Hopewell and of this new fledgling country. Well, the Bowman brothers that sit here before us tonight are the great, great, great grandsons of Peter Francisco.
Wow.
So the connection was always there. Maybe this is divine intervention, it finally came, the pieces finally came together, but I thought that was a very intriguing, interesting story. They, they want to leave a legacy with this name, and they want to do it right, and they have been so cooperative through this process. Early on, we said that we can't do this in vacuum. We met multiple times with the Planning Commission, with the EDA, with the DDRC, and the Hopewell Downtown Partnership, and a couple of members of council, together. We met on multiple occasions as we progressed through the planning of the project, to get their opinions, to get their input, to look at what they were looking, looking to do. And we have tried to be as transparent as possible while still keeping to the tenants of economic development deal, where you have to keep things close hold till you get to the finish line, or the development opportunity could be, could be wasted. So we've worked very hard to try to get as much input as possible through this process. I think it's been an incredible process. Every time we finished one of those meetings, we asked the entire room, and it was 30 people, I guess, in there on some occasions, we asked the entire room, does anybody not support this moving forward? And each time, no one was opposed to it moving forward. So it's been a very good process, with a lot of effort's been put into this. We've tried to vet this as thoroughly as we could. We've looked at the parking issues, the traffic issues. We think all that will work out over time with the additional studies and with the additional parking, construction of parking facilities and such. We think there's a solution to all this, but there are stops along the way, so they can't move forward without us being protected. And for the first time in the 10 years of that land being proposed for development, these people have actually come forward and wanted to buy their land at the appraised value. They're not asking for us to give them property. And they're also not asking for city contribution, the cost of construction of the apartments and all. They're doing this with private financing, it's not a HUD project or any other outside source like that. This is a market-rate private development, and I think it's exactly what the city has been seeking on that site for many, many years. And this PUD process that you just approved, I think, really put the stamp on it, because it requires that they keep at least 50% of the space open, in green space and usable space. And that assured that that wonderful asset we have there, the waterfront, the path from downtown into the waterfront, the promenade that they'll build, and the amphitheater that they're permitted to either, either restore or rebuild, I think all those things would not have happened in most other developments. And now we have an opportunity. So we're very excited to present this, and let's, you know, hear the public input on it. The Bowman's are here. I think they'd like to say a few words, if you're open to it.
Absolutely.
But I'd like to introduce Chip and Ed Bowman.
Thank you. As Charlie said, this is an important piece of land here to Hopewell. We understand that many people may have attended the Patrick Copeland Elementary School, and it holds a...
[laughing]
Mayor Shornak, Councilman, Councilor Denton, yes. There's attachments to this piece of property here. There's the amphitheater, we understand is very vital to the community, and that is very important. There's also a beautiful cemetery that's kind of been hidden behind much of that, that's, holds attachment to many other people. The church that's adjacent to the property has an amazing attachment there. Charlie mentioned the attachment that my brother and I had to this. As little boys, we understood who Peter Francisco was from our grandmother, and we understood the story of Peter Francisco being kidnapped from the Azor Islands and, by pirates, and being dropped off at the city wharf here. We understand that he was cared for by the people on the city wharf who saw him. He spoke no English, and they thought he was older than he was because he was a large man. He was five years old. The city folks took him in. Eventually, he went to the poorhouse, and Judge Winston from Buckingham County came by the poorhouse on his way doing business and bought him, along with some other folks, to come and work at his plantation. Very humble beginnings for this young man, who worked as a blacksmith on a plantation. At some point, he was able to be released to go fight in the Revolutionary War and did many heroic things. George Washington said that we wouldn't have won the war without him and his efforts and his bravery. And then he became an upstanding citizen. At the end of his life, he was a sergeant of arms of the Virginia General Assembly. And part of what we want to do here through Francisco Landing is to honor him. I'm very proud of the bust that's out in front of the windows in front of this area right here. And my brother and I have been very successful in business, and we want to use this as an opportunity to honor our great-great-grandfather, to make sure that his place in history is there. So there's an emotional connection to this, not just a economic connection. So we wanted to make sure that that's perfectly, perfectly clear.
Chip?
Sure.
I just wanted to say thank you. The process that we've gone through has been, I think, truly wonderful. The process of getting feedback along the way, taking a site that's, that's wide open and an open canvas, and letting the site tell us what needs to be there, and letting the community tell us what needs to be there. All along, our goals for this project have been to enhance and preserve open space and the waterfront for the community. Now, obviously, we think it's a, it's a wonderful site to build residences on because of its proximity to the waterfront and the open spaces and the, the array of open and available and some filled commercial spaces along Broadway and maintaining that business corridor. We also, very early on, it was clear that this is a precious site to this community, and so we want to honor that and respect that. We want to look and preserve the historic aspects of the site. We've got a couple of things, obviously, that are, that are important to that. One is, you know, for us, it's important because it's historic, related to our family, the story that Ed just shared. But we also know that the Copeland site in and of itself has a lot of fond memories for, for people in the community, and we want to incorporate into the, into the plan and into the plaza area using the restored Copeland school clock on a clock tower. So it'll be part of the fabric of that. The historic amphitheater is another part of that. You know, we intend to do discovery on that early in the project to determine exactly where it is, what's there. Can it be preserved, or is it something that we have to refer back to with some, with some relative new construction? But that's part of the, part of the plan has been always to incorporate and make sure that the public spaces remain public spaces. In fact, that we preserve them with, with restrictions and easements, so that they're, they can't be developed ever, that they'll always be a part of the fabric of, of the Hopewell area. We were careful along the way with guidance from city staff, city leadership, the site, getting inputs from other professionals, to make sure that what we're building has the highest probability of success. So we've talked to the experts. We've gotten their feedback. We've gotten their input, and they've helped us design what's here, what's included in the PUD application, to make sure that this project fits with the comprehensive plan, fits with what should be on that site. And it's something that we can be proud of having there for, for a long, long time. With that, you know, we're thankful for the, the chance to present. We're thankful for the, all the effort that's been put into this. We're excited about the project moving forward to the next steps, and we're thankful for your support.
Okay, thank you.
One last note, if you...
One last thing I want to say. I'm looking at the statue of your great-great-grandfather, and you both share a remarkable resemblance to your great-grandfather.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say before.
Anybody looks at the picture of that statue, you really do. They both do. They both do.
No, they've been a pleasure to work with, and I look forward to, hopefully, this project moving forward and working with them into the future. They are available for questions now or after the public hearing, as staff is, so thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Same.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. The only person I have signed up for the sale of the city property would be Catherine Podlowski.
Good evening, Council. Catherine Podlowski, Ward 1. Can you hear me? There we go. Patrick Copeland School Site was my backyard. All my siblings went there, my mother worked there. I know every square inch of that land. I know where the amphitheater is in the ground. I know where every spring comes out of every hillside in that whole neighborhood. I hope that if this project goes through, that you might be able to find out that information from city documents. But all bets are off on that one. Patrick Copeland Site is one block away from my house. My suggestion is to keep it green. I'm opposed to the development on this site. I'm opposed to it on many levels. On a personal level, my feelings of distrust of the city's actions around the site stem from the way that Patrick Copeland School was demolished. And now it seems to be fast-tracked to the public. Although there's mention from Charlie Dane that there was all, all agreement in all the meetings from everyone he spoke to, I was not at any of those meetings, nor did I know about them. My opinion would have been quite different. On a neighborhood level, moving the entrance to City Park to between the cemetery and the Aldridge Parker property could be troublesome. As of right now, that gas line access road is just a party spot. It is full of trash and other things up there. I was there today. The seven to 10 years of construction would no doubt have a negative effect on the surrounding homes and the roads. My street, Second Street, was not repaired for 10 years after that nursing home went in down the block from us. 10 years! Just got repaved last August, and the patch had to be patched. 10 years we waited for that road to be repaved, wasn't done. And on a business level, there's a new apartment building already being built on Cosson Street. And I know Hopewell's strapped for cash, but hoping for lots of folks with disposable income, not going to make it so, just hoping for it. I've seen no big-box retailers willing to build in downtown to serve the folks that are here now, much less anyone coming in, coming in later. And as I recall, after demolishing a historic building, which Patrick Copeland School was the main leading building in the historic designation of downtown, yet it was demolished, no federal transportation dollars can be used on a project where a historic building was torn down. It was how it was 10 years ago. I haven't checked to see if the regulations have changed. On an environmental level, the existing conditions plan is incorrect on my block. Shows Epp Street going through to Appomattox Court, it does not. The upper drainage basin of the nursing home is not shown, it is there. The stormwater issue, the suggestion of engineering the valley bottom for the stormwater, a little questionable to me. Bottom line for Hopewell is, us who were born and raised here know we have bigger environmental issues that nobody talks about. I see the people I go to school with walking around, look like the Walking Dead, looking like me. Quarter of my graduation class is gone. Keepone's never spoken of. Nothing big can be done at this point, but you know... is gone. Kipone's never spoken of. Nothing big can be done at this point, but you know, just feeling like the folks in Hopewell are disposable really, really hurts. This used to be a, um, uh, city ruled, everything covered by the plants. That, that's not happening anymore. You gotta start looking out for yourself. And for the people who say, when I ask them whether they're gonna come and speak, they say, "No, I'm gonna let you speak for me." I said, "Well, why don't you get up and speak?" Gotta learn to speak for yourself. There not gonna be other people who are gonna come up here and speak for you. It just aggravates a liver out of me. And the River View seems to be the selling point on this. River View's for sale with these properties going up. And for any citizens who are interested in some more of the background information, here's my only tip. There's a whole list of documents attached to this, uh, council agenda with further information about the contract. And if you have any interest, look into the documents. As I said before, I would like the site to be kept green. I'm against the development on this site. Thank you.
Alrighty. Um, any, uh, okay. Elliot?
Elliot Alites, 900 Mansion Drive. And just for clarification, I am speaking as a citizen and really a property owner downtown. I have my father's building that I purchased and, you know, I also know what's going on because I'm on the Planning Commission, just so everybody knows, but, uh, I don't know any, what I'm going to speak about is no knowledge that everybody else doesn't know. And specifically, it's the parking. Um, I, I really want to make sure that during the development phase, we look at the parking and look at the parking and look at the parking because the same parking lot that we will share, and by the way, I'm very in favor of this development, very much so. But it's shared by the Beacon and the East Broadway and the other Cosson Street, other business owners downtown. So, I, I know that there's a second half of the parking study, correct, Mr. Dane? It's coming?
Yeah, I have that hand this week.
Okay. So, there's a second half. The first study does say what they said it says. The second half of the study will say, "Well, what if you add in the Beacon? What if you add in East Broadway?" Then what? And we don't have that answer yet. Again, I still think the PUD is the way to go. But as far as we get to the development agreement, that's when we'll have the second half of the study, put all the math together and make the right decisions for the pa- parking because it can be solved. I have no issue. But if we don't make some of those decisions now and the deal's made, then it'll all be up to the city. The city will have to pick it all up. So, I ask as a business owner downtown to pay attention to the parking studies. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to talk about the subject? If not, I will close the public hearing and there is no other action. So, we will move forward to the communications from citizens. Um, the only one signed up is Ms. Edmonds. Mister? Oh, Ms. Edmonds? Uh, she left? Okay. Um, if they're, um, opening up the floor, if anyone else would like to talk about anything else other than what's on the agenda, you may. If not, we will move on to reports to the city manager. R1, please.
Just, Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on your agenda this evening is a request to vacate a portion of Western Street and Old Woodlawn Avenue, uh, submitted by Amin Land Holdings LLC. Another request is to vacate a portion of undeveloped right-of-way in order to add the property to the development. That's already been approved at, uh, four, one, 4,013 and 4,017 Old Woodlawn Avenue. Ms. Griffin's here to present the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, once again, and members of city council. As Mr. Altman has said, the city has received a request to vacate a portion of Western Street. This decision comes from Ashish Amin of Amin Land Holdings LLC. You remember, back in February, you all approved a conditional use permit to allow for an enclosed storage facility. They have provided us with the site plan. In order for that site plan to move forward, um, this vacation is required. The vacation would allow for 20, 25 feet to be added to the rear of the property and it will allow for the turning radius for the fire vehicles and emergency vehi- vehicles to take place. You have in your packet a memo from our city engineer recommending approval of this. We have, since the drafting of the staff report, received comments back from Norfolk and Southern and they have no objections to the vacation. They are the only other adjacent property owner along with Ashish Land Holdings. Tonight, you have Derek Tim- Derek Timmons. You have Derek Johnson from Timmons Group who's here to speak on the behalf of the applicant. The Planning Commission recommended approval back on July 12th, 2018. Staff also recommends approval.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, did you wanna come up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Derek Johnson with Timmons Group representing the applicant in this. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the vacation. It's a 37 and a half foot piece of Western Street that was undeveloped. That's adjacent to the railroad and, uh, we're seeking to vacate that to be able to, um, like, um, Mrs. Griffin said, be able to provide emergency access around the building.
Okay. And just to be, um, just to let the public know, this is the storage units that they are gonna be building. Okay? That's the storage units.
Yes, ma'am. Enclosed storage units.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Okay.
Um, does anybody have any, well, let's go ahead and, um, do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
I'm sorry. That's not a motion. A motion to what?
Do I have a motion?
Motion to vacate that property.
Vacate the portion of Western Street.
And Old Woodlawn Avenue. Okay, there's motion on the floor. Councilor Denton seconded. Any further discussion or questions? If not, roll call, uh, Councilman Bailey?
Yeah, okay. So, um, the, the vacation is to, uh, it says, at the current size of the building, the vacation is required to meet the tuning, tuning should be turning, right? Radius on the north rear corner of the building.
Says the turning radius of the, of the...
That's correct.
Emergency vehicle.
Of the emergency vehicles.
For the fire truck.
That's correct.
Okay. It looks really close to the railroad tracks. I just, um, but, okay. Turning radius of any emergency vehicles. Now, is that the only thing that, that, um, so, what, what is, what is going to be done with this vacated?
It's gonna be added to the, to the property that's already there. So, they're going, if you turn in the packet and if the clerk can bring up the Timmons Group plat, creating lot 8R, block four. So, it'll be added to the rear. It's approximately 35, 37.5 in width and .215 acres will be added to the property in order to build the enclosed storage facility. And the rear of that is needed in order for fire trucks and emergency management vehicles to be able to make the turn radius from the back of the building. The, the building is not on this particular plan, but we have reviewed the site plan and that's required in order for them to be able to make that turn radius. This is something that was required by the Fire Marshal when reviewing the site plan.
So, the, I'm, I'm trying to get a grasp of it by...
It's two tenths of an acre.
From the photograph. I mean, as far as what, currently, that's a wooded area?
Correct.
Yes.
It's an unopened section of the rideaway.
Along the railroad tracks.
Along the railroad tracks. We've previously vacated portions of that right-of-way for the Stair Resuits project, uh, that is just down from this site.
And so, they're going to remove the wooded area and put, um, asphalt?
They will, at, at this point, but 10% of this parcel is required to be, to cover, have tree canopy cover. And they are meeting that requirement. I think they're actually at 8.9% of tree canopy cover on the site, not including other landscaping that includes shrubbery, um, around the building. Um, they are also providing the street trees that they are required to do. And in the parking, um, area, they're also required to have landscaping.
So, yeah, I would be happy to hear from the Timmons representative. I'm sorry, Mrs. Griffin. I just wanted to...
Yeah. So, of the 37 and a half feet at that old right-of-way that was undeveloped, uh, there'll be 20 feet of that will be for the access lane that's required by the Fire Marshal to get access and fire trucks all the way around the building. The remainder of that will, will be, um, grass area and then existing trees at that location. So, it's not like all 37 and a half feet's gonna be paved. We're not putting a public road there. It's part of the site and is incorporated into the site plan that this owner will maintain and, and have to take care of.
So, preferably, just leave existing trees where you can as opposed to put it, because putting grass is...
Yes, ma'am. We, we...
It's not great either. I mean, as far as runoff goes.
Yeah. The, the city ordinance, uh, has a very stringent requirement for tree canopy. We try to save as many trees as we can because we get more credit for those in planning the trees.
Do we have, I mean, are we, are we, are we doing the, um, 'cause at one point, we discussed and, and, and we were told that we could not, it was too much staff time and too complicated to charge stormwater fee according to impervious surface square footage. Um, so...
Yes. There is a fee that's required based on that.
Based on square footage?
Correct. Correct. There's a, there's a stormwater management fee, my understanding is a stormwater management fee for the city that's required on, uh, on properties. That's part of the...
Well, I know there's a stormwater fee. Everyone has a stormwater fee. I'm just asking about square footage because when we, when we initiated it, I know Richmond, for example, it's, it's according to square footage of impervious surface as opposed to...
Right. So...
What we had here was not the case.
Okay. That's a different question. Yeah, the city does have a requirement. This does it, they follow the state guidelines with respect to imperviousness and the requirement for imperviousness and how you treat that. Uh, you can buy credits. You can build basins. You can do underground storage. You can do infiltration. If you have soil to support it, so yes, the city does, does require that. If that's what you're asking.
That's correct.
Uh, yeah, I know they require it. I just, I mean, I, I just, just wondering as far as, so, it will be encouraged to keep as much wooded area as opposed to mowing down the existing trees and, you know, I, I'm sorry, but, you know...
The value of the trees is to having to replace those trees because the requirements you have for tree coverage on your lots. Uh, you have foundational plannings. You have plannings around the perimeter of your site that you require, but you also have, uh, based on the square footage of the imperviousness, the parking lot, the buildings, that thing, you have to provide, uh, a percentage of tree cover back to it. So, yeah, 10%, 10% back.
So, our zoning ordinance requires and encourages the retention of existing tree canopy. You get credits for that retention of tree canopy. So, they're saving tree canopy...
As much as possible.
As much as possible, yes. And then, they will, then we have a requirement that then follows that for landscaping that would require landscaping to be placed on the site to supplement the, the retention of the existing canopy. Um, now, with regard to your question regarding the stormwater utility and the theme, I'm looking at the code right now and it says that you determine the impervious surface of each parcel of real estate in square feet. And that's how we do it. We do, we determine it by impervious surface.
We do?
That's what the code says right here.
Well, because we, we did a flat fee when we, when we implemented it. So, if it's changed, great, uh, because that's not how we were doing it originally. It was...
Looks like an ordinance that was adopted in 2015.
Okay, residential versus commercial. Well, we really ought to think about implementing that for residential instead of a flat fee. There are some who have way more impervious surface than others. And I think those who have less impervious surface would be happy, um, to be charged less. And, uh...
Ronnie.
So, I'm, I'm, just an idea. They do it in other cities. I don't know why we can't do it here. And I know everyone's groaning. Here she goes again, talking about stormwater fees. But guess what? I was talking about this 12 years ago and no one was paying attention. And now, it's a rule and a law and we have to do it and we have to pay a fee. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on, um, we have a motion on the floor to vacate. We've had it seconded. Um, I just would like to add one thing. I know that Western Street has been a real problem as far as trash and drug activity along the railroad track. Um, we even had uh, Kipone Beautiful as well as some of the city folk to come out and help us. And how many tires did we get along the railroad track? Uh, gosh, 30, 40 tires that we cleaned up. Um, but anyway, this might be a good thing that we're having, um, a owner of a property that, um, will maintain some of the property along Western Street. It's been a real problem for some of the residents along Western Street. Um, okay, motion on the floor. No further questions. Roll call, please.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Shornak?
Yes.
Councilman Bailey?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Councillors have got list?
Yes.
Motion passed to six of...
Okay, R2.
Madam Mayor, members of council, you have a request in your packet from City of Refuge. Uh, they are requesting funding from the city to assist with the opioid addiction treatment program that they're currently running. Uh, Mr. Dane is here to provide you an overview of the request. And we also have members from City of Refuge here that would be available to answer questions.
Madam Mayor, members of council, um, the, the funding request is from the City of Refuge, which is an opioid addiction treatment program. This operated by City Point Restoration Church here in Hopewell. Um, they've been operating for multiple months. I'm not sure exactly. Almost a year, 11 months. And, um, they, they operate a nine-month treatment program for individuals who enroll. It's also recognized and used as a pre-trial diversion program by our Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Newman, in the court system. Um, and it sends people with opioid addictions into this program. And, um, it's a daily program, uh, that they, they show up daily and work through their issues and get counseling and get services. And, uh, they've successfully graduated one class already of a couple Hopewell residents. They have another class that's coming close to the point of graduation. Uh, Mr. Newman informed me that he believes there's been nine diversions from the court system into this program, which means that each person who's diverted into that program rather than sent to Riverside Regional Jail, um, you save $44 a day on those people. If they, if five people make it through the nine-month program in the course of a year, just five, and nine have already been sent through and there's more coming. Um, if just five make it through the, the nine-month program, the city saves $55,000 in Riverside Regional Jail costs, uh, during that nine-month period that they would have been serving, that, when they would have been incarcerated rather than receiving treatment. Um, so, we think this program hopefully will pay for itself over time. The request from them is, they've gone to multiple, um, philanthropic foundations such as John Randall Foundation, Cameron Foundation and others, um, seeking funding. And all the organizations say, "We gotta have somebody in there in the game first. We don't want to be the sole funder. We don't, we, we don't want you coming to us as a sole funder." They're seeking, because it's located here in Hopewell and the impact that we will have on our budget, the positive impact by these people going through the program rather than to jail, um, they're seeking our support as a city to be that first player in the game. Their annual operating costs are way more than the, uh, $50,000 that they're requesting. Um, it is attached in your, um, information pack. It's 164,000 plus a year to operate that program, um, to be fully functional. And they're asking the city to become a partner in, um, handing up $50,000 to initiate this annual budget so they can get fully operational and offer all the services that they intend to offer. And then, they can go back to these other organizations and say, "See, we've got somebody in the game. We now, now need you in the game." Um, so, the request is before you. Uh, Reverend Collier and this large contingent here is all from their, their group. But Reverend Collier is here if you have questions of him. And I think probably we ought to let him speak briefly if you don't object.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Again, appreciate you giving us the opportunity to share with you tonight. And, um, we're very hopeful. And to be honest with you, we are in much need. Uh, we are operating on a funding that's very limited right now. Uh, we're providing services at a, at a minimal. Uh, and we believe that if we can continue to provide services and can gain the funding. But I want to stress to you that if we don't gain funding soon, this might not be an option in the city any longer. Our church has taken on a, 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 an incredible amount of, uh, a burden with this. There have been other... There have been other churches in the community that have made the investment. There have been private citizens that have made the investment. Presently, we have nine active participants, four of which are from Hopewell. We have volunteer participants that have come into the program, not just diverted participants, but volunteer folks that have come into the program. We've, again, graduated two. We're getting ready to graduate two more, and we have seven that are pending, waiting on their court date to be diverted into the program. I can't state to you how emphatically we need funding now. We are putting every bit of the effort, I've got people that are working tirelessly to continue to get this program up and running, and we want to continue to provide not only recovery services, but we want to provide educational services and job training and job placement. But if we can't get the minimal funding to continue the recovery program, then we're going to be at a very difficult impasse, and we need you to help us in this situation. I know there's the, a thought of, well, maybe, you know, we need it now, and I can't overstate that enough. And I know you folks are under the barrel. I understand that you have a lot of things going on, and I'm not trying to make this situation any more, more of a burden to you, but I can't overstate that, and I'll answer any questions that you have. I believe we're saving the city money. We've taken already with four graduates, two that have just graduated and two that will graduate. We have already saved you. If those same four people would have gone through the process and had been incarcerated for nine months, that they were in the program, it would have been forty-eight thousand dollars. So we've already saved the city presently forty-eight thousand dollars. And I believe, and I've talked to Mr. Newman, that you already allocate funds toward Riverside for those that will go into the program, that go into the program. So we're saving you money. It's not like we're asking you to give us money that we haven't already saved you, but we need you to help us tonight. We desperately need you to help us. And we're doing, I'm like, I'm working tirelessly. I've got two people that work and put in forty hours or more a week and they're not getting paid. And they're doing it because they believe in the program. And we've got people that are in the program, and they can come up and tell you what the program has meant to them. And we've got people in this city that if we don't get them help, we're going to be having more problems. There are going to be more funerals, and there are going to be more deaths, there are going to be more families in crisis. And we can't afford to wait. We can't afford to keep waiting the next month. And then if you ask me, if I sound frustrated, I am frustrated, because everybody's telling me, well, you do this and you do this, and if you'll get this person to join in, we'll come along. And everybody's telling me to get somebody else. I just want somebody to step up and say, people that don't have anybody else, that don't have anybody that believes in them, that just wants someone to give them a path, just give them an opportunity, just say, we believe in you. And maybe, just maybe, maybe we can save some lives. Maybe I can keep a little two-year-old from finding out that their mama just overdosed on heroin. But if we don't do something soon, we're going to keep having this problem. And I'm emphatic with you today. I'm doing everything I can. I'm giving hours and I'm giving time, and I'm needing you to help me this night. I just need you to help me. If there's any way possible, please consider this request.
Thank you, Pastor. Is there anyone that has any questions for the pastor?
Yeah.
Councilor Zep Golis?
Yes. Pastor, did you say that the five people that you treated are Hopewell residents?
You have, we have two that have come through the program that were Hopewell residents, or they were incarcerated by Hopewell. That means that they were, they were arrested in Hopewell, they went through the Hopewell courts, they were placed in the program through Hopewell. So anybody that you arrest, whether they're a Hopewell resident or not, they are, you're going to pay for.
Do you get anybody from the drug courts? In other words, I know the drug court, I attended your services, I also attended the annual drug court that they have in Prince George County, and some of those people are from all over the area. Some of them are from Hopewell. And they sent them through a program that seems to be very effective. I was very impressed with the program that they had in the drug court.
Well, it's a good program, but it's a different program from this.
Can you talk into the mic, Mr. Newman? Can you talk into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're diverting people before they ever get into the court system. That's the difference. Drug court, they've already been convicted, they're going through the system, they're doing it to try to keep them from going to jail. But the problem with drug court is they have so many restrictions on them because they're grant-funded. They can't do a lot of things this program can do. For instance, if someone's picked up a possession with intent, I'm not talking about some big-time deal, I'm talking about the kid on the street corner trying to support his habit. Drug court can't take them. We can. So this is a whole lot better deal than drug court. Drug court has its purposes, but this is entirely different.
Have y'all applied for grants with the John Randolph Foundation?
Yes, we've applied with them, and basically they said, we want to see the city step up. That's basically what they've told us. If the city steps up, they'll step up.
Listen, I'm all for fighting the opid things. What I, here's my concern. My concern is, is we using public monies to fund the church operation.
No, sir.
Okay, okay, so it's got nothing to do with the church? Okay. Okay. Because what I'm saying is, if that was the impression and that was done, then we'd have several other churches coming to city council wanting to get public funds.
This is a separate corporation, it's a 501(c)(3) corporation, City of Refuge, Hopewell, which is an affiliate of City of Refuge in Atlanta, which is another 501(c).
But it is not under, it is not under our church. It operates in our church, but it's a separate operating nonprofit. It doesn't, it's not, it's not receiving any funding from... Our church is helping to provide funds, but it's not under our 501(c)(3).
It's an in-kind donation from the church by using your facility.
Yes.
And I will tell you this, my office and the chief, former chief matched it, we donated ten thousand dollars in drug asset forfeiture money to get this thing going, so...
That's the only questions I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, anyone else? So, Councilor Denton? And then Councilor Lumen Bailey?
Well, what this request that you're doing tonight is that you're requesting an annual funding from the city for fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Every year?
Well, I understand that this is something that you can, that we would have to come back and have this discussion, I guess yearly in order with each city council, because each council has to pass a yearly budget and there needs to be, you know, a readdressing of issues. My hopes and prayers as the funding continues to be generated, my personal feelings are, first of all, we are saving the city money. I really think we need to address that. Every client that we bring into our program that does not have to go through Riverside, it saves the city money. This is money that you allocate already annually, if I'm, and if I'm incorrect, if Mr. Altman can tell me, but you allocate so much money a year to go toward Riverside in order to house these particular clients that we're dealing with. Each time they go in or diverted into our program, you're not having to pay for them to be, otherwise they would be in Riverside. So we are saving the city money. And I also understand that each year that there's a budget, a budget process, but can I just be completely honest with you?
Sure.
I worry about next year, next year, I need money right now. I'm not, I'm not worried about next year. We won't have a next year if we don't get funding. And so what I'm asking is, if you can find it, you know, to be able to say, we believe in these folks. You know, a lot of people saying, you know, I believe in these, I believe there's a future and a hope, but if you tell them, I believe in you, and then you pat them on the back and say, I hope you find a path, that's not believing. Believing means investment. That's at least where I was raised, the way I understood things. And so I'm just asking you to make, I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, I pray about this. I'll get on my knees, I'll do whatever you want me to do.
He will too.
I'm just saying, give us a chance. Just say, we're going, we're going, we're going to make an investment, and we'll come back next year, and I believe we're going to be able to come back and we're going to be able to celebrate some good things. We're going to be able to celebrate some kids getting their moms and dads back. We're going to be able to celebrate somebody getting a job and making a living and making a, I think we can make Hopewell better. I keep preaching to my church, I keep telling the people in the community, I believe in Hopewell, but we don't make this, and I believe in these River, I think it's great what you're doing, beautifying, but you can have a beautiful atmosphere, but if the citizen in them are going to pot, it really don't make no difference in my mind. So I say, make the investment, not only in the property, but make the investment in the people in the city that need it, because if you don't help them, they're not going to get any help. I'm just telling you, I just, that's my heart's cry. I've been here eleven years. I believe in this city, and I believe in you guys. Prove my belief this night, please.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Yeah.
Well, Councilor Lumen Bailey and then Councilor Zep Golis?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I know that there are many who are imprisoned who, what they really need is treatment, either due to abuse or, I mean, you know, substance abuse or, or mental problems. And putting them in prison is not the answer. So, and so I think this is a really great program, the church, and I, but I'm, how do you, how do you divert the individuals that would otherwise be charged and then end up doing drug court? How, how do you, how do you go about that? I'm just curious to know, Mr. Commonwealth Attorney?
Well, basically, they don't ever get to the point where they can go to drug court. When they come in, if they want to go to the program, then the court just continues their case, and they'll go to the program, and they'll come back for, for a review periodically, and they'll keep continuing until such time as they successfully complete the program. And it's a good program. It's a very good program. It's peer facilitator. I single-handedly brought John Shinholzer in here and the Shin Foundation by myself. I got Reverend Collier to agree to let them meet in his church, and he suddenly pulled out on us several months after he came in. His staff stayed with us, and we, as the Board of Directors on City of Refuge, decided to take it over. We were going to eventually do that, but it just happened a lot quicker than we wanted to. There's a crying need for this, and it affects every one of y'all's constituents across town. And this is probably the only place in a tri-city area that there is recovery, unless you have insurance. And most of these addicts don't have insurance. So, I mean, this is, if you're really going to take a stand and try to fight this opioid epidemic, y'all really need to step up and do this.
Well, and so the John Randolph Foundation has, have they said that they would match with the city?
I want to be able to go to them and say this, I have been told in conversations with, if we can find the City of Hopewell and perhaps other foundations that give, we have written a grant to the John Randolph Foundation, and they were, their question was, where are the other partners in this? Because our budget, what you see before us is a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar budget. That's a fully funded budget. That allows us to be able to fully fund our employees, that's allowing us to buy everything we need to buy to operate in a year's time. And it really allows us to, because in the recovery process, you need to understand, it's not just about recovery, it's about a pathway.
Right, right. Finding a job and sticking to it.
You have to, you have to educate, you have to train, you have to get partners in the, in the business world. We've been before the Chamber of Commerce, and they seem to be very enthusiastic about the possibility, but everybody's sort of standing on the sidelines
Waiting.
And waiting to say, well, who's going to jump first? And the whole time, we're running a program. And it's, it's a program that has tremendous amount of, you know, educational opportunity as far as learning how to recover. Most of you probably realize, but in, in, in those that are struggling with addiction, there are mental health issues. We want to partner with other mental health organizations. There are, you know, understanding their addiction, learning to cope with their addiction. D. Archie, who is our main instructor, he is a drill sergeant. I invite you to come by and watch one of his classes. He doesn't pull any punches. They're not going through a, just a rubber stamp. You know, we've, we've had to expel people out of the program, because if they can't adhere to the principles and they can't stay clean through the process, they can't stay in it. But the point is, it's a program that if they can follow through and meet the requirements and complete it, they come out with a chance. But then there needs to be the next, and that's part of the funding, is part of getting together with other affiliates and partnering and doing the collective work.
And I agree, I mean, insurance stinks as far as covering substance abuse.
Because none of, they don't have insurance, so everybody's, you know, we have problems with, they come to us, we've got to look for a place for them to get detoxed, because if they don't have insurance, so we've sent them to Virginia Beach, we've sent them to different localities trying to get them clean, and so we're doing, we're working hard. I promise you, we're working hard.
I'm sure you are.
We're just, we're just asking you. Sure, Leanne's one of our board of directors. I've got a bunch here if you want to hear from some people.
Thank you, thank you for letting me speak. So I just want to speak as a representative of the board, but also to say that I feel like I jumped. I jumped at the beginning. I'm not from Hopewell. I work with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I'm a nonprofit professional, and I'm a human development professional. That's what my education is in, that's what my passion is in, that is my profession. And so I would not willingly stand in front of you representing something that I didn't feel like represented what it was doing professionally. I've worked with anti-recidivism agencies in Tennessee. I've also talked to my brother-in-law who works in Montana and actually works with the state politicians there to work in some of this work, because he, he was in jail and he was an addict, and he went through their program, which is based in the same foundation as what we're doing here, which Jennifer and D. Archie, the, the...
Curriculum?
No, mm-mm. The curriculum that they're using is based in cognitive behavioral therapy and life skills and things that we know really change people from the inside out, which is why it works when people really invest in the program. So it is a best practice. You know, I think people hear, it's at City Point Restoration Church, and, you know, obviously Thurman is a pastor and he comes up and speaks to you as a pastor, but I come up to you and I speak to you as a professional, and I speak to you as someone who values best practice, and I value policy, and I value the intersection of all of those things. And I've seen it, and I've learned about it in various areas in the country, and what I see happening here is similar and in line with what is happening in those places. And so I'm in it, and I'm supporting it. And I hope that you will hear that and understand that, maybe hear it at a different level than what you've heard before, and be more willing to take a step into it, knowing that there's some, really some professional buy-in from someone who, who lives in this world of nonprofit and human development and program development and all of those sorts of things as a professional, as a trained professional. And I think that there's, just to speak to the leadership, I have a lot of respect for Jennifer, who, she's the director over here. She has grown in ways that are amazing. I've had the opportunity to have many conversations with her, and she is always looking to implement best practice and do what is good and do what is right, not just gut-wise, but really in, in practice, in what is going to work for the participants. And she works her tail off, and so does D. Archie. And I know you've heard this already tonight, but there is an element of not being able to do your best work when you are not able to take care of yourself, and if there's not finances to take care of yourself as a professional, it can become really hard to do the work long-term. And so the work of a nonprofit is to find money, year after year after year, to go after grants, to find the state and federal dollars, you know, so this isn't a one-and-done thing. This is a continual process. But in order to set up a system that allows time and allows effort for that process, there needs to be some funding in the beginning, not, not just from you, but from John Randolph and, you know, from Cameron, from all the stakeholders. So I hope that you will hear that, and I hope that, that that will speak positively to what we're trying to do and maybe influence how you're thinking tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I would just like to add my two cents. I remember a meeting that Pastor Collier and Edith and several others started like three years ago, and I listened to Pastor Collier's vision that he had for this problem. And I can see in the, in the short amount of time that it's, you've gained a lot of groundwork because you believe in it, you're passionate about it, your staff is passionate about it, the church is passionate about it. And to see two... And to see two people graduate and attend their graduation was awesome. To see, you know, Devon, you know, he's a friend of mine on Facebook and Jennifer is too and everybody is. But to see these people dedicate, not getting paid, they go in there every day and just like Dee Archie and Jennifer, go in there every single day and talk to these people, study, help, try to help these people along the pathway, it's amazing. And, you know, the governor has addressed the opioid addiction in the state of Virginia. We have started the opioid task force, which I'm proud to be on because I saw a presentation that Delegate Ayer gave out in Dinwiddie County. And I brought her in here to Hopewell to give that same presentation on opioid addiction. It's something we've got to face. It's something we, in order to correct problems, to help people get out of this rat race of addiction, we have to, you're right, put our money where our mouth is. And I know $50,000 is a lot of money to this council. I know there are some concerns. I don't have many concerns. I, I'm totally behind you 100%. But however, there are some counselors that are concerned of the annual, you know. I know that this is a personal issue to a lot of people. It doesn't just affect one person. It's from every household, from every incomes, from every gender, race. It, it affects everybody. And to, in order to see change, we have to be willing to do something about the change. And you, you're right, funding is absolutely necessary. And, you know, I, I would like to say to those counselors that are having a hard time with it, if they would consider giving you a year of funding. And then you come back to council and let us see exactly what you've done, what progress has been made. But at least give you a chance. That would be one of my recommendations.
I do have one client, one of our clients that's getting ready to graduate, his name's Sidney. Would you be interested in just hearing from him?
Absolutely.
Would you be okay?
Before we do that, I, I think it's important too. I want to find out what the city manager's position is, the administration, and where the funds are going to come from. I've worked with the CSA and the Children's Service Act and we, we have to deal with the kids that some of the OED mothers and fathers are in jail and they, for, for drug use. And they got a one, two, and three-year-old child that's also addicted. We got to handle that. And when we want some money, which is a lot less money than you're asking for, we had some resistance. And if we had resistance then to help the CSA, I'm basically, I'm asking, if we couldn't put up a little bit of money to, to get a system in down there that we needed, where we, where is we going to get $50,000 from? And then on a recurring basis.
So, one, the issue with the system isn't an issue of funding. It's my opinion that we currently have a financial system in place that probably does what we needed to do. It may be that people need some more training to get it to do what we need it to do.
I'm glad to hear that.
So, that being that.
Okay.
And I'm still open to discussing that issue with folks from, for the CSA office, but I want to make sure that we're, we need it.
Well, you hear that, okay.
With regard to the request, this is an issue that affects every walk of life. And I think that, yes, they are, we are correct in that we do allocate a million-plus dollars every year to Riverside Regional Jail to cover our anticipated costs of our incarceration. And in some of those years, we go over that budget number and some of those years, we are under that budget number. But we do allocate funding. And this program will keep, so if we look at it from that perspective, we're not sending people there, we're sending people through this program, which is an alternative. So we're not spending money at Riverside, we'd be making that investment on the other side of the house. Based on the numbers that were provided just so far, but we've got seven people in queue, if I'm correct, over in court. And if those people, regardless of whether they're Hopewell residents, if they're sentenced in Hopewell, Hopewell pays that bill at Riverside because they're coming from our court. Those seven people, in addition to the $48,000 that we're saying with the four thus far, that doubles our return if they're successful and almost triples our return. So we could potentially pay for the $50,000 essentially by diverting those people to the program. Now, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we go into that budget line item when we take it out, because we may, we have to wait to see how it goes. But I think that we have funds that, you know, as you know, we do the budget, we have an undesignated fund balance that we can look at and we can use. And I, we've talked and we all know that this council cannot commit the council of next year for $50,000. So my suggestion would be that if it's, this becomes an annual request, it'd be like everyone else that fills out the paperwork to request the funding annually, provides the statistics of how this program's success is going and we continue to move forward. But I agree that everyone is standing on the sideline waiting for, to see who's going to be the first person in. And at some point, if our local foundation here with John Randolph Foundation and if Cameron and Petersburg are waiting to see someone, then perhaps it's an opportunity for us to show the leadership to take that step. My hope would be this, and we talked about this when we met, this year's request at this point is 50,000. However, if John Randolph steps in with some dollars and Cameron steps in some dollars and then there's outreach to Prince George, Petersburg and others that benefit from the program, potentially our request for next year isn't 50, it's less because other jurisdictions are sharing in that cost. So there's an opportunity. But I, I see this as an opportunity for us to make an investment. We have an opioid task force. The task force, I wasn't at the meeting, but I understand the task force made a recommendation to support the request. So I think that at some point, we kind of need to not be bystanders. And I, I mean, it, it's a first issue.
Well, let me say this. Thank you. Because if that would have been said earlier, I wouldn't even ask you your question. I mean, because all of a sudden, it's almost like I get blindsided. You know, I've been to your program. I mean, I went up for the graduation. I remember that young lady graduating. And I've been to the drug court. So there's a lot of questions. And when you're up here and there's other people that's media and things and to give away, you know, the money like that. So they were legit. But once he explained it the way that he did, it's a whole nother story. And I, I wish we would have called, and we didn't have a recommendation on our thing up here from the administration to prove it or anything, see. So I, I just enclose the discussion and go ahead and vote to give them the money.
Counselor Pelham and then Counselor Denton.
Mr. Kales, can I say one thing?
Well, he didn't actually ask for a vote, call for the vote.
I have a question for you, Mr. Kales. Did you call me?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, well, Mr. Zep Gollis was saying that all of us had to be here. Is that true, when we give away money?
I was talking, but, excuse me, let me go ahead and ask, I'll finish your question.
Yeah.
The state law that says that any amount of money or indebtedness over $500 must be voted by all members of council.
I'd have to see that.
Right.
Do you have a site?
Yeah, it, I don't know if, the 14, 14, it's in, there is, trust me, there is the law on that. And that's also in the Prince George Charter, they use the same law, that anytime you have a amount of money over $500 or an indebtedness of over $500, it must be by vote of all elected council members.
Okay.
And we're short one here tonight. And before I got the explanation from the city manager, you know, on that, I would have, would have said something like, let's get some more information and bring it back at the very next meeting.
Okay. And the other thing, can I say anything without voting?
Well, let me explain why you're asking me that question first.
Yes, please.
Because before the vote is called, Counselor Pelham advised me that she's on the Board of Directors for this organization. Therefore, she has a, technically a personal interest in, she is excused, should be and must be excused from voting. And when you're excused from voting, you can't participate in discussion or debate. Now, you might not be doing that, so I'll leave it to you to qualify what you're going to do.
I'm not going to debate, it's just...
Well, this is discussion. I use that term interchangeably, debate or discussion. They are engaged in discussion. So you can't, if you're not going to vote, yeah, you really can't participate. That's, that's actually the right word.
I think they know how I feel for so.
I know how you feel.
I'm bonding. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Counselor Denton, I'm sorry.
I, I just, just throwing this out and y'all can, is there any way that we could do this, like a matching, to get everybody kind of on board? Do like a matching, we agreed to finance this, but we'd like for John Randolph Foundation to match it? Or is, is there any way you can?
We can.
I don't know that we can, we can make someone else match. I mean, we can certainly meet with John Randolph Foundation and Cameron and encourage them, but I don't know that we have any authority to make them match. We, the hope would be that by us stepping forward, they would then follow through with, and I won't, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Reverend Collier, I won't call it a commitment, but they indicated that they're on, they're standing on the ledge waiting and...
It creates great leverage.
That's what I was thinking. If we said yes, now come on, you come with us.
It gives us leverage. It does give us leverage. Because there has been conversations in regards to the funding. And when they stated that they'd like to see others such as the City of Hopewell.
Something like a challenge grant.
Yeah. That they would, they would love to see that. And when they saw that, that would really spurn them to act.
Counselor Lewin Bailey.
Thank you. I just, well, if it's, if it's correct that it's all elected members of council and not all elected members present at the meeting, well, I'm still kind of waiting to make sure. But I was going to suggest, if it's, if that's the case, that it's all elected members, then we could at least go ahead with approving 500 and in anticipation of, at our next meeting, moving forward with the rest. I, I still, I'm, I want, I, I think, what I'm feeling from everyone present is that we all want to support this and, and so, I, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do that.
Would it be okay if we could go ahead and postpone it in two weeks at our next meeting?
Yeah, I would say, and I'm not, but I would say, it seems as though we have an issue that we need to resolve from a legal perspective to address that, because I don't think we're going to be able to address it like right now, because we need to find the state code site. I know that we have provisions in our charter with regard to bonding that talks about all members, but I, I don't know that about general expenditures at, from that perspective. And in this is, in this instance, I think we have a valid question in the case of, let's just, let's just assume that Mrs. Gore is here tonight, but Mrs. Pelham can't vote. That would mean, you know, all, all members have to vote, but she can't. So we, we have a little bit of a quandary and what I sense is a support for this, but we've got to kind of jump through this legal hurdle here first.
Well, could we go ahead and just postpone this for, excuse me?
Why don't we just table this to the next meeting?
No. Could we just go ahead and put this at the end of our meeting and while the city attorney is looking for that answer? And we could go ahead with our three and the reports to the city attorney and then come back to this? Would that be okay until we find out the answer?
Well, I can tell you, I've searched every instance of, well, not every, but, and I've done this before and I don't know that, that section. If I can ask a question, are you saying that every member has to be present?
All members of council, that's exactly what it says.
All members of council have to be present.
Any amount over $500 in cash or any, $500 in indebtedness. In fact, Prince George County wrote it into their charter. Not into their charter, I'm sorry, their rules and procedures for 2018.
That everybody has to come to a meeting.
Yeah.
If that's the case, nobody would get anything done.
No, no.
I'm not finding a site.
I have never heard of that.
I don't know that I'll be able to find a site tonight.
I promise you, I can bring it to you in the morning, first thing. If you will, if you'll excuse me, I can go home, put, put my hand on it and bring the actual thing here. It's just the, the code number.
Why couldn't you vote pending verification by Stephen?
Absolutely.
For the next 24 hours that it was a legal vote? And if it's not, then...
We can bring it back in two weeks.
Two weeks, but if it's a legal vote, you know.
And then he can give me his site in the meantime and we can discuss its applicability. And if there's not a, if there's not a problem, then you have a vote. If there is, then you're in the same boat you'd be in and we'd be hopeful everyone would be here at the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, if there's no...
I was just going to say, I've moved that we allocate the 50,000 from the general fund. Is that, okay?
We'll cover it.
Okay.
From what?
It'll be from fund balance in the general fund.
From, okay. So fund balance in the general fund. So that we allocate 50,000 from fund balance in the general fund to the City of Refuge program pending the legality of this vote.
Verification mistake.
Yeah, pending verification of, of, of this motion with, with, without one council member present.
And also, this is, you're stating your motion as for one year?
For one year.
For one year.
Yes.
Okay. Motion on the floor. Do we need a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
That's the...
Thank you, Mayor Shornak.
Yes.
Counselor Lewin Bailey.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselors of Gollis.
Yes.
Motion passes, follow.
And just to be clear, Counselor Pelham's is, was excused from...
I understand. I know, you explained, thank you.
Thank you all.
Very much. I appreciate you giving us the time.
Got to raise some money.
Thank you much.
Don't leave us out there on my limb.
Thank you for being, sorry, we didn't get to hear you talk.
Thank you for all coming out tonight in support of this. Okay, on to our three.
Yes, ma'am. We have a request to budget and appropriate funding that the city has received for the Riverwalk project. Our Recreation Director, Mr. Reed Miller, is here to discuss the request with me.
Good evening again, members of council. We're very excited, as I mentioned earlier tonight, that the Riverwalk project's moving forward and moving forward quickly at this point. We have received significant funding from various community partners and sources, the Virginia General Assembly and specifically Folar. The two amounts you see here, $100,000 from the General Assembly. I believe the partner who's in our audience tonight had an instrumental role in, in lobbying for that funding that we received. And then the dollar amount, $40,680 from Folar, that's been given on behalf of several of their community partners, businesses and corporations here in Hopewell. We've already received the funding, it's in place, the project budget's already been established. This is simply just the process of appropriating those dollars to the expenditure account so they can be used towards a project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion on the floor, second.
Second to what?
So moved to what?
So moved, okay, that we, the budget appropriation of the 140,680 that has already been received by the city is revenue.
Second. Okay, have a motion, second it. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Shornak?
Yes.
Counselor Lemon Bailey?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselors of Gore?
Yes.
Motion passes, six oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city attorney report rules, council rules?
I guess I can start by saying I was 30 seconds too late, I did find that code section, I think you're fine, I respect your recollection, it does say, I'll just read it, it's really short, and I'm just making this part of my report so we know what we don't have to do, but it says, it's Section 15.2, 1428, which I think you said almost.
I was gonna say 1409, but I didn't wanna say one, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it's under, of course, Title 15.2, which governs counties, cities and towns, it's under Chapter 14, governing bodies, and it's called Procedures for Certain Acts. And it says, no ordinance or resolution, which this was, appropriating money exceeding the sum of $500, I'll just read the whole thing, imposing taxes or authorizing the borrowing of money shall be passed except by a recorded affirmative vote of a majority of all members elected to the governing body. And then it goes on to say, in the case of the veto of such an ordinance or resolution, where the power veto exists, it shall require passage thereafter, recorded firm of vote of two-thirds of all members elected to the governing body. Now, this changed, this statute's changed over the years in 91 and 97, and it might have been more on point as to your recollection, but now it requires, it says all the members, how many members do we have? We have seven in office, it requires four. If you had...
All members.
Someone, it's not, yeah, it's not anymore, but if you had six members, because someone was removed and no one had been reappointed, or someone had passed away, or whatever, or let me give you a better example, and this is very similar, do you remember the charter changes we made a couple of years ago? That was your point exactly, where you looked at it, you said, well, wait a minute, it's creating a majority out of the old number of councils?
Five, yeah.
When it was five, and there were certain actions that you could do on a three, and you said, well, that can't be, and we said, well, yeah, it actually could, if you had a meeting where you had a quorum of only four people showed up and three were somewhere else, then three could pass. This is saying that exactly. This is saying that if you had a meeting, you know, of less than, you had five come, let's just use five come, two people didn't come, or Counselor Pelham, well, this is exactly that situation. This vote was 5-0, this vote had to be at least 4-1, because she's excused and Vice Mayor Gore's not here. So, this vote is okay.
Entire number.
But you could not have done this on a, well, two, you couldn't have done this on a 3-2 vote. You could have done anything else tonight on a 3-2 vote, because you would have had a majority, assuming she stays excused, but you couldn't do this. So, you're right, but under these facts and circumstances, it is a valid vote, because it was 5-0 and you needed four. Does that make sense?
Well, because you said so, that makes it a valid vote.
Well...
Because it really...
But yeah, your point's well taken, that's exactly right. You needed four, and you can never do it with less in a situation like this.
But Prince George actually wrote that into their rules and procedures.
I think you wrote it...
That three can conduct business, however, any amount of money over $500 has to have five council people.
And I'm gonna go back and look at the charter, but I really think that was the effect of your change two years ago?
Yeah.
Not allowing, I think that was for ordinances, so I think it's the same idea.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, would you like to go ahead?
Oh, I'm on again.
Oh, the report.
Yes, the vote is, the vote stands.
The vote stands.
Right, that was part A of the report. Now, the other part is the rules, and let me tell you what you've got in front of you. If you go to your first page after the title page on the left side, you see one page that's clean, let me tell you what that is. That page is all the rules that you have approved so far. Those are clean versions, thank you, and Counselor Pelham, you can see the only change from the 204 was January instead of July that you pointed out. And then, because you made that motion, we were able to approve those several, so now we have one full page, and you're like, well, maybe, that's not a lot, one full page, but remember, I turned these from 30-some to six, so we're getting there. What you next have on the following page is Rule 105, and Counselor Pelham actually had pulled two of, I think I proposed six or seven new rules, her motion was to pull those two, so I wanna point out to you what I did to those rules, and Counselor Gore had discussed with all of you and me, she has seen these, but I'll leave it, I'm not sure you should vote on these, but I do want you to see what they are. Go all the way to the bottom of that next page, 105, and those are, those are what this rule would look like based on what was discussed at the last meeting. There are a bunch of red lines here, if you look at the second, the first one from the bottom, it says, proposed changes, red line per comments at 9/11/18 meeting, that was the last meeting, and I put in a letter A and a letter B, so this is addressing voting, and this goes all the way back to the whole silence issue that I think everybody wanted to come out. So, under this version, A would address a counselor who is present but fails to vote, or B, who in violation of Rule 209, and you're gonna have to go to 209 at some point, that was another one we changed, excused himself or herself from the meeting to avoid voting, they can be disciplined. I've put in here, and this was in here before, nobody can make you vote, that's Robert's rules, that prevails if you don't have a rule. Now, if you tell me a rule that says everybody has to vote, you're gonna have a hard time enforcing it, but this is what I think the consensus was from the last meeting. I want you to flip over to 209, though, because it'll make it make more sense. There were some questions about excusing yourself, not excusing, who does it, and I simply made it, after the last meeting, based on those comments, I made it say, any counselor may excuse himself or herself during a meeting, except to avoid voting. Now, how do you prove that? I don't know, maybe somebody says, I'm leaving because I don't wanna vote. Somebody do that? Maybe, you know, you can't legislate every issue, you just hope people abide by the spirit. But if you need to be excused, you need to be excused, and you can be excused under this rule, as you always could. I don't think we've ever had an instance where anybody presiding and said, no, you can't use the restroom, sorry, Johnny, you know, no. So, this just simply lets people be excused, but they can't do it to avoid voting. If you think they're doing it to avoid voting, and a majority wants to discipline them, they can do that. That's a pretty tough burden, but you have to set your standard somewhere. This does that, this is the best way I could think to do it, that's 105 and 209, Counselor Gore's not here, Vice Mayor Gore, so, you know, I don't know that you should vote on any of these, but those are the two I continue to work on, and then to keep the train moving, I added Rule 201, and that's basically the seating chart, and I did a whole lot of corrections on the language. You can see on that where the proposed changes are, and I made a note, I actually mentioned Ross in this, I said, red line per then Clerk Carney as of 3/13/2017. I did this a long time ago when Ross was still here, I hadn't changed it, but he, this was one of the rules he had some input in, and it modifies the seating chart some, and I told Clerk Darrington the genesis of this, and she's not had any comment on it, certainly it's council's call, but he did suggest moving that, and I was gonna present that to council at the time. So, now it's before you, but basically, if you look at the clean version of that rule, it's now much shorter, it makes, I think, more sense, everything I write, I try to make it make more sense, it says now it's in numerical order by ward, except for the other, it's not chronological, I don't know how that word got in there, but that means by year.
Yeah.
So, I don't really think you...
Ones who are elected to the...
I don't think you're seating chronologically, you know, so I cleaned that up, and it's just a whole lot shorter.
Pretty funny.
And, but, you know, your chart's there. So, I just wanna point out what those things are, my suggestion is you wait for Counselor, Vice Mayor Gore, but, you know, if anybody has any suggestions now that you, I hope, understand better what I changed, happy to talk to you now or offline, but, you know, if we can get these three passed, you're well on your way, because a lot of these other rules are some of the easier ones to deal with, where they're just semantic.
Counselor Pelham?
Yeah, most of the time, Counselor Gore goes, Vice Mayor goes out of town, she normally contacts you, did you say she did?
Yeah, she, she had written me an email about, after the last meeting, about the rules and some suggestions she had, in the meantime, I'd already made my...
Any corporate?
I'd already made my changes.
Okay.
I sent them back to her, and I said, hey, I hear you, take a look at these that I'd already made, I think they address your concerns. But I will tell you that one of her concerns was, we don't need Rule 209 at all, but I'd already made that change, and then she's, you know, obviously been very busy and she's out of town, I hadn't heard back from her on this round. If she had written me back and said, you know, I love it, do it, I would tell you that, and if you all wanted to vote. Now, at the same time, I also explained to her, and I'll repeat it, when you approve these, they're just approved, you're not gonna adopt them until you adopt all of them, reason being, they play off each other, you know, this rule says, see that rule, this rule defines it, and you realize it's very dangerous to adopt these, you need to adopt the entire set. Now, I hope, and I don't think you will, I don't think you're gonna, anybody's gonna mess with this clean page, and every time you approve a new rule, the clean page is gonna get bigger, and then, you know, very soon, you'll have a bunch of clean pages that you have time to adopt. But if you get there and you do a final read-through, and you go, wait a minute, we shouldn't have said this, we should say this, chances are, everybody's gonna agree, there might be a typo or a miss, you know, we may say, I try to be very consistent in what we call things throughout, so there's no confusion, you know, presiding officer, that can be a number of people, you know, that can be in her absence, that can be Vice Mayor Gore in their absence, that can be any, that starts out being the clerk, and then it can be any one of you after she stops presiding. So, there was a lot of confusion in terms like that. Those are gonna be easy rules.
Okay.
The other question is, are you moving the city clerk close to you?
Well, that's why I put the Ross qualification, because he, he...
Then we need to change that.
I didn't wanna spell that out, but, but you caught that, and his rationale, and I love Ross, everybody knows that, his rationale was, we're doing a whole lot of loud talking across, you know, where you all sit, and I don't think we do quite as much, we communicate a little differently than Ross and I did, but there are times where we have to communicate because we're thinking the same thing or not, so his idea was, we should be next to each other. Now, and she, I said his, you're not his.
Well, we, you decide.
So, that was his idea, and no, and no offense to Ms. Hampton, but again, when I drafted this initially, there was no deputy clerk, but there is a reserve space, I'm perfectly happy to, and I think it's worked well with us, a way, I don't necessarily think they have to be together, but I can certainly see a benefit to that, too, because there is some discussion.
Communication.
But I'm not, I don't have a dog, and whoever comes next doesn't have a dog in the fight, it was just a suggestion at the time.
So, if we approve this tonight, we can just change that?
Well, I think we need to wait for Counselor Gore, I mean, Vice Mayor Gore, to be here before we approve the rules, that would be my opinion.
But if you, I think your question was, if you approve keeping the status quo, yeah, what would happen would be, the next time you see it, in other words, if she were here and you all said, yeah, we don't like that, we want y'all separated, we want Ms. Hampton or whoever the deputy is, and again, it's by position, it's not any one of us, you know, we wanna keep it just like it is now, that's just me going in and doing a clean version, you could, you could approve it, you wouldn't have to see it again, so yeah, you could do that, and I'm, you know, I don't think anybody's gonna be offended if you say, no, don't make that change. We like the word changes, but keep the seating the same, we can do that, it's an easy fix.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But I agree to wait, I think you should wait.
Thank you, I think so, too. So, we'll just go ahead and wait, reports to the city clerk, just need TBRs, need lots of vacancies?
Lots been, lots been locked.
Okay, so, we need to go ahead and make sure that people know we have lots of vacancies, and to try to encourage people to volunteer to be on some of these committees.
Also, to remind, put it on the agenda, always put it on, I would suggest putting it on the agenda every time, even if we don't talk, we can pass it.
Yeah.
It wasn't on this night. Always put it on the agenda.
Put what on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
It's like, no, no, I'm talking about enclosed sessions so we can talk about...
Oh, the people that are pending?
Or just for appointments, period. If it can go on the agenda, shouldn't it go on every time?
Well, the only reason that I didn't this time is because, and Mr. Kalas obviously can step in and correct me, generally, we like to put in parentheses what boards you're talking about, instead of just a general.
So, all the, where you can list all these and say...
List all of those.
If you want to, because we have to consider them. If you have, the ones you have TBRs for...
Yes.
Those are the ones that should be listed in, in the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we need to be reminded that we need to fill these positions, either COF or...
Only the ones you have TBRs for.
Let me explain why, too, and some of you were there to hear it, it stemmed from the Denton case, she's not in here, is she? So, I can talk about the Denton case.
Talk about it.
But it stemmed from that, where we put a lot more specificity now, because that particular motion didn't list who was being discussed in closed meeting, so that's why we put the parenthetical. But maybe we can find a way, we, perhaps we can find a way to, Madam Clerk, perhaps we can find a way in that motion to maybe reference...
Because it would be really long.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but maybe, maybe we could reference in the proposed motion, what appears in your report.
Yeah, it's easy.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
That would be good to reference.
Consideration of, you know, boards and commissions set forth in city clerk's report. I think that would do it.
Yeah, that'd be good, because we really do need to address those vacancies.
But we have to be specific.
Yeah.
We'll put it back in your packets, obviously not for the next meeting, but for the meeting after that.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and if there are any boards that have to?
Well, the library board, we have several that are like screaming at us.
Okay.
But, you know...
All right, well, we need to...
If I may, I can send those to you guys, but obviously, we can't do anything until...
Right, if you could send that to us before, and let us look at, to see what we would wanna do, then we'll be more prepared when we get back in the back, what are we gonna do, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Reports to city council, any committees, individual counselors? Counselor Lemon Bailey?
Thanks, I just wanted to thank the Ward One residents who came out for the Ward One meeting, and also who came out for the discussion of the proposed development on the Patrick Open site, and, and say that I'm looking forward to the Virginia Municipal League meeting, and I'm not sure who all is going to be able to come, but it is the 10th anniversary of the Go Green Challenge, Government Challenge, and Hopewell has once again passed with flying colors, we have platinum status, so we'll be one of the ones getting an award, and the Secretary of Natural Resources will be there to, and also the Director of Mines... of Natural Resources will be there to, and also the Director of Mines, Mineral, and Energy. So it'll be a, a big, a big year for the Go Green Challenge. And then, of course, there'll be other interesting things discussed, and I'll report on that when I come back. Again, I don't know who all's coming, but I hope others will be there, and look forward to, and I hope maybe some of the staff could come for Yeah, at least that. That's Monday afternoon for the presentation of the Go Green, so. I think the reception's around five thirty for the, for the presentation of the Go Green awards, and it's in Hampton. So, and that's Monday, it's coming Monday, so. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other business?
Well, it's individual counselors, I have something to say.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the counselors for supporting the City of Refuge, and what I wanted to say was basically that we are saving the city, it's money that the city basically saving, because we don't, we didn't have to spend the forty-eight thousand dollars out of the current budget of the million that we have, because four persons did not, were not incarcerated for those nine months. So you are diverting monies, but you actually had a saving, so thank you for that consideration. And, something else, I can't remember. Thursday night, we're having awards two and six, Counselor Holloway and myself will be meeting with the Superintendent of Schools and the citizens of those two wards to discuss the year-round schooling.
Balanced.
I'm not saying that word, because people need to know that it's year-round schooling. Nobody know what a balanced calendar is, so, are you gonna use both? I'm using year-round, because it's year-round, except for three weeks out of every twelve, and twelve, four weeks in, in summertime, okay? So it's plain English, and synonymous to me, so. Please come out at six thirty at the Elks Lodge at fifteen oh five High Avenue. If you have any questions, you can call either one of us, or the Superintendent of Schools, I guess.
Counselors of Gollis?
Yes.
So fast.
Would you done this?
I did.
We had our balanced school year meeting just this past Monday, yesterday, and we had some teachers there, so we got some good information. But there's one thing I want to see if council feels the same way that I do. The point is, when we go to this balanced school year, it's gonna affect, you know, merchants, it's gonna affect people that, that are, that in the daycare center business, it's gonna have buses that travel year-round, where a lot of people enjoy the summer, because you don't have the school buses out there, you know, that. And it also could mean an increase, because it does, it's not gonna be free, it's gonna be an increase in cost to the citizens. And I'm wondering if not, in fact, I would recommend we have a voter referendum, that we get it put on the ballot in, for the November vote, and let the citizens, because this does change a lot. And, and I'm for the change, I mean, I think it's gonna be okay. But the bottom line is, it is gonna cost anywhere from six hundred thousand to a million three, you know, we don't, in additional money that we don't have. And one of the things, we are gonna have assessments next year, and I'm sure that it's all, they're going up, because it's going up in every other locality. But I would think in that it affects, it actually affects everybody in the city, the ones with children and the ones without children, because of the reasons I'm talking about on the road, and it's year-round. The other item, I would like, you know, this time of the year, we're preparing for any charter changes, anything that we may need to do. And I remembered us talking about charter changing, about the appointments of mayor, and voting, and things like that. There was a lot of suggestions from some of the counselors to possibly have a charter change, which I'm gonna direct this at the city attorney. Can a judge enact a law that another law in the charter allows us to do? And what I'm referring to is the part of the charter of open meetings, where it says that all ordinances, resolutions, motions, and votes must be done in open session, except for normal parliamentary procedures. That simply means when you're in closed session, and you decide to adjourn to tomorrow night and stay in closed session, that would be normal parliamentary procedures. But it goes on to say, and when it's in the public interest. So my reading and understanding of that part of the charter is that if it's in the public interest, you actually can vote in closed session, if it's in the public interest. So I think that needs to be looked at. If the charter allows us to do that, whenever it's in the public interest, we can go in a closed session to discuss it, then how can a judge overrule the charter, the state law? I don't think that they can. The other thing that bothers me about it, while we may need to go through a charter change, I don't think we do. I think the judge is, is an error on that, simply because the charter allows us to go in a closed session, again, when it's in the public interest. But if we could, if we had to change the charter, one of the reasons we may have to change the charter is simply because we're the only locality that has to abide by that ruling, so we're discriminated against.
I just have a point of order. Is this, I mean, this is really not to be discussed right now?
No, this is council of concerns, and I'm bringing it up, because we do have to get that. I'm under council's concerns.
I mean, he's discussing something that should be discussed by everybody.
Well, let's see, where are we on the agenda?
Comments, you can make whatever comments you want.
Are you on?
Counselors' concerns and comments.
Reports of city council, is this individual counselors?
Yes.
Concerns, yeah.
Are you giving a report?
No, not a report, individual counselors.
You haven't gotten to
Just a minute. Normally, normally what happens is we give updates on any committees we've been on, we give, we give what is going on
All right, then I gotta head to myself, but next thing is council's concerns before you leave.
She already went through, she already called for committees, it's individuals, counselors. Committees have already been
Well, I'm a member of the legislative committee.
No, no, we've already talked about this, she already called for committees.
It's just, this should be discussed by the entire council, Zep Gollis, because, I mean, it's getting late.
It's freedom of speech.
And I mean, this is, this is like
I was finishing up, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, finish up.
I was finishing up, that was it. I was finished.
No one is in a rush.
So, if, if I could, remind council that Mr. Bragg sent out an email to every council member, requesting your comments or anything regarding the legislative process to be submitted by Thursday, the twenty-seventh. So we've sent that out, we sent it out to staff. We're gonna be scheduling a meeting of the legislative committee once we get that information back in, so if you have, obviously, I'm not aware of any charter changes that y'all may have discussed prior to beginning here, so it would be good for that, but please submitting the information or concerns to Mr. Bragg, so we can have that on the agenda when we have the legislative committee meeting in the next few weeks. And we've also solicited input from departments as we all, that we do, also allowing schools to provide any input also. So we are, we are moving forward with that process, Mr. Gollis.
Thank you. Mr. Bragg and I also had the conversation that he was going to pass some information on to the city attorney, because we do know we got a deadline to get stuff up to the General Assembly.
Yep.
Thank you, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Who seconded that motion?
Ms. Bailey.
Ms. Denton made the motion.
I made the motion.
Oh, yes, yes.
And Ms. Bailey seconded.
And I nay. I did not say, I just said nay.
I've worked it out.